Do you hear that over here?
I don't.
Okay, it's my cat. I was like, she's about to go live and my cat's doing circles meowing around me.
Is that her back by the amplifier?
Yeah, she's on the floor right now licking her paw.
Just one cat?
Just one, yeah.
I got two.
And I had two. And it's a wood stove, not an amplifier. Wood stove is going to be warm right now.
Okay, you're all set if you want to start. Your YouTube is started and the public hearing agenda is on the website now.
I'd like to call this special hearing to order on October 20th at 6:30. The reason for the public hearing is ordinance 2020-30 and ordinance amending chapter 504 of the zoning ordinance of the Village of Manaway relating to the authority of the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals to waive fees. The second one is 2020-31 and ordinance amending chapter 610 of the zoning ordinances of the Village of Manaway relating to site plan review.
Am I allowed to address one of the ordinances?
Please do.
2020-30.
Yes.
Is this for council approving that the Planning Commission or the Board of Zoning Appeals, if it is a nonprofit that is applying for a variance that we can, when we say waive the fee, say it's a two, let's just say it's a $200 fee. They would pay that upfront and then at the time of the hearing and approval of the variance, we would reimburse them for anything but the cost of what it took for us to do that. The mailings, paying the clerk for her minutes, doing the minutes and such. So it's not a freebie and it's only for nonprofits.
Why is it only for nonprofits? The two murals that have gone up on Main Street have been by private citizens wanting to beautify Manaway. And I don't know why they wouldn't have the same consideration as a nonprofit would.
It was asked of Planning Commission to review this and this is what they came up with. John, Randy, you have anything to add to this?
The only thing, Planning Commission addressed the nonprofit issue. We were not going to waive it for private citizens or so forth or for any other issues. They did not, they did not take up that issue.
So a nonprofit will then sort of become a pass through for somebody wanting to, it seems to add more work to the effort.
Well, this is the third reading to us. And someone could have said something so that Planning could readdressed it. It was never sent back and we were happy with it, so.
But why do we hold the public hearing then? Is this for the public to be able to respond to things?
Absolutely, they can.
Okay.
It's part of, it's part of the legislation that it must go before the residents.
And so a resident is voicing an issue?
And we've, we've heard it.
Okay.
There's five other people there that could comment on it if they're not happy with it.
Well, for me, I think that anything that has a chance of reducing revenue to the village should probably just, you know, go before the council and get approval from the entire council. That's kind of my thought about it.
I agree.
And then, you know, the council meeting is only a week after planning, so it's not like you have to wait too long to get to that meeting point.
One of the most important things that council people are to do is property and finance. And I don't think we should delegate authority of finance to commit is. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, that's just my opinion too.
And everyone's entitled to their opinion. The other piece of legislation, 2020-31, that is reducing the amount of, God, it's been so long. The Planning Commission members to five actual copies, I think it was. And the rest would be electronic and that's just for residential. That does not include commercial. Was there any other changes on that, John and Randy?
I don't think so. I think that was a.
And, and I'm going to repeat that this had changed in 2017. And I was on council at that time as a new person, unfortunately. And at the point in time that we went to build the new house, I had the zoning book that we were working from did not have the update from the 2017. So we still had the 2010 revision in there. Granted, that is an error on our part, my part. However, the 2017 change was where the term new, new home construction had been added. And prior to that, it had not been in there. And it just seems a bit overkill and I'm just bringing this up again.
Any other comments? Michelle, is there anyone else in the audience?
I don't have any emails from anybody commenting, no.
Is there any other discussion from council?
No, ma'am.
Well, we'll give the public a few more minutes to chime in in case they're out there. Hey, my clock is showing 6:40. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second.
Matt?
Yep.
Paula?
Yes.
Marty? Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to call the regular council meeting to order on October 20th at 6:40. Matt, do you have the flag ready for us?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Matt's going to put up the flag. Okay, Marty, you want to start us off?
The Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America. Under God, indivisible.
Thank you. And then we'll have a moment of silence for Marilyn St. Hilaire, Clarence, known as Junior Bennett, Elio Ifalise, and Oddly Zuver. Roll call please, Jenny.
Matt?
Present.
Paula?
Present.
Marty?
Here.
Tammy?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
A motion to accept the September 15th, 2020, regular council meeting minutes.
I move.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Motion to accept the special council meeting minutes, September 29th at 2020 at Booker Park Pavilion. If I may say something before anybody makes a motion. As I read these over, I saw some things that didn't look quite right. Jenny has checked, excuse me, her tape. Michelle also has a tape and I've requested that. I would ask council to put these on hold until we review the other tape. Jenny had had some problems with masks, wind, the rain and stuff.
I can understand that.
Jenny, the tape or the recording that I gave you, was that any good? Yep. Yeah, it was, it was clear. And I checked the comments that Tia put in that she questioned. And I'm leaving the minutes as they stand.
My, my biggest question was, I mean, there were several, but when Ben had made, had said that we have, there are 200 people in this village that don't even use 200 cubic feet per day. And I knew that Ben, it was just a, probably a misspoken thing because he knows nobody uses 200 a day, 200 a month, but not a day.
200 a month is correct.
So I didn't know if we wanted to correct, you know, I don't know. If that's what he said on the tape, then I don't think we can correct it, but I just wanted to bring, you know, there, it's like little things like that. I'm sorry, Ben?
I said I meant 200 a month if it's.
I figured you did.
Yeah.
And Jenny, I just have one correction on the back page. Kara Stutzman's ask if properties, rental properties are considered residential of commercial. I think it's supposed to be or commercial.
Okay.
Getting a bottle of water.
Yeah, I think when I checked the tape on Ben's comment, I remember listening for the 400. Because I thought that's what was questioned if, if he said four or 500. And I verified that, I verified that he said 400, but I don't remember checking the part about the 200 if he said day or month. So I can verify that if you want to table it for next month.
And then he, he did say it would be right at 400 cubic feet per customer.
He did.
And if that's what you said, he's, I know you say that's what Ben said. I was just surprised that Gene would say that when it is 500. So again, that is what it is.
Well, why don't we just go ahead and table it till the next council meeting? Because it's just minutes.
Can we have a second to table?
I'll second.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yeah.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Marty?
I just will. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the mayor's report. I have a couple of things. I met with Mark Hammer for the movie. He, Marty was there for part of the meeting. So they're going to be starting, there, he's been in town. They're going to be starting to shoot. He's going to get us an itinerary. There will be one day, and I'll make sure everybody gets a copy of the itinerary, where they will need some extras milling around on the street over on Prospect. So I'll make sure everybody knows about that. And he's still trying to get permission from one of the property owner that's not in the village. And Marty and I gave him an alternative that he was going to check out if these people don't give approval, so. We have that going on. Matt and I met with Congressman Joyce and Tom Queen, one of his people. And down at Restoration 44 with Dan and Terry and Scott and Jamie wasn't in there, was he? And I had a very nice conversation with him. I think I sent all of you the press release from Congressman Joyce's office. And then Matt and I were, had talked with Bob from the Richard Courier. And he has asked to have us take him on a tour this week. We're going to be doing that Thursday of the five new businesses that are downtown and introduce him to the businesses. And he's going to do a little interview with each of them and get something in the paper, so. I reached out to all the businesses I, and left messages with two, but spoke with the rest, so. And the only other thing I have is I did not see it in the council packet. So I'm going to ask for clarification. It's a work authorization for CT. And back in, I think it was June or July, I had brought to your attention about the $300 max that the village administrator can approve. Because that's the way the legislation reads. And Paula had made a comment a year and a half ago or so that all work authorizations from CT must come before council. During this meeting back in July, I questioned whether if someone is having a site plan review or something like that where they are paying CT for their services through the village, why does that have to come before council? It's under $3,000, which usually $500. And they're paying CT for their expertise so they can move their site plan review along. Well, we've had this work authorization since, I think Wednesday of last week. So this project's been held up because I was told that I had to get council's approval. But yet, again, I don't see it in the minutes or in the packet. So I do have a work authorization for CT to do a site plan review for property owned by Compass Packaging down next to the hardware store, the open parking lot.
Is it, is it $500 a year?
$2 work authorization, yes.
$500?
Yes.
That's in the ordinance.
Pardon me?
I said that's in the ordinance for $500. That's what it, it cost, the cost is.
That's the cost, yes. And that's what the work authorization is for. So I'm asking two things for you to approve this $500 work authorization so CT can start work, since they will not work on, start any work on anything without assigned work authorization. And two, clarification, when it, if it has to do with a site plan review through planning and such, does that have to come before council?
If, if we have an ordinance that says that the site plan review is $500, which we do, then it shouldn't have to come before council unless it's over $500. That's my opinion.
Well, I just need clarification because we're going to have two more coming up and I don't want to hold those projects up also.
If it's no more than $500, then they should, it should just go ahead and be done.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Put away.
I think this has been, I thought it was brought up before. From a site plan review perspective, that it should go forward.
Right.
Again, we're doing the same thing we did last time. We discussed it. No one is making a motion.
Okay, well, I'll make, I'll make the motion. Let's just, let's just stop this now. I mean, let's just fix that.
Thank you.
So I'll make the motion to pay CT and I'll make the motion that if it's $500, then you deal with it.
We've got, yeah, we've got, we've got an.
Yeah, yeah, let's just, let's just do this.
Yes, that's, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Okay, so that was for the $500. Now, so I guess I don't need a motion to approve the $500 work authorization that I have on my desk for CT then, so we can move on, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Citizens. Okay, Jenny, financial reports.
Okay. For our tax updates, I'm just going to summarize instead of going through all of them. We're on track for all of our tax revenues right now, except income tax, we're down about $23,000. License tax, we're down about $48,000 and permissive tax, we're down about 900. So that's where we are. Everything else is pretty much on track. We received the House Bill 614 coronavirus stimulus check last week from the county. And I'm going to be asking council to appropriate this check and the second check that we received last month. Even if we don't spend it, we have to appropriate it to be able to give it back to the county auditor, so.
That's correct.
We just want to get that done. Then a couple of months ago, I told you that our Verizon account was hacked and someone had charged three iPhones. Well, we finally got that case resolved and we've had a full refund. So we still, we're still in a fight with AT&amp;T though, aren't we, Joe? We haven't gotten anywhere with that and that could take forever. Yesterday, I met with Larry Casmeric and Debbie Boop of Casmeric Insurance. Our renewal is looking like a nine and a half percent increase with Medical Mutual. They said the only thing that we can really do is have our employees update their Form Fire, which is kind of a headache, but everybody has done it, so I think they can do it again. And then Debbie can get a quote from Anthem Blue Cross. But they think it's probably going to be about the same. And they seem to think that our renewal at five and a half percent is actually a good deal. And a lot of people are renewing at a much higher rate. So hopefully, you know, next month we'll have something for sure. Uh, let's see. Couple of weeks ago, I sent out an email that, that Rita sent out letters to 300 nonfilers. We worked on the list. A lot of these people are not residents, but there were some contractors that were working in the village. You know, they have that 20-day rule. And it's, it's impossible to really track that. But anyway, they, they did, they found some. And there were some landscapers, there were some maintenance contractors and some cleaning companies that were working in the village. So I'm anxious to see how much money we're going to get out of that. There were some residents also that were never added to anyone's lease. So I'll let you know when we get some kind of a dollar a month. That could take some time to get them filed and some might even have to go to court. I don't know. But I'll pass the information along when I get it. And that's it, unless anybody had any questions on the financial reports.
Jenny, I have a question. You said that the license tax was down 40%, I'm sorry.
It's down 48,000.
48,000, I said, yeah. Has everything been turned in with the COVID and the license bureaus being shut down for so long? Has everything caught up or?
No, I feel like that's probably what's going on.
Okay. I, I just didn't know if maybe you got a huge lump sum check that now everybody has to be, you know, catching up and getting it done. Because believe it or not, when I go through McDonald's in the morning, I bet at least once a week I see somebody with an expired plate that I want to call Joe and say, "Hey, get this guy when he pulls out of the road." So, okay, thank, anything else, Jenny?
Nope.
Motion to approve the financial reports?
I move.
Second.
Marty?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Okay, Jenny, you have any correspondence?
We, we get this every year. I think Joe probably got a copy too. It's an annual letter from the Ohio Department of Commerce regarding renewal of liquor permits. We've never objected to any renewals in the past. But if we ever wanted to, we would have to pass a separate resolution for each establishment that specifies the problems at each place. And we'd have to include legal grounds for your objections. And that is set forth in the ORC. We'd have to file by November 2nd.
Yes, we renew them.
Yeah, we usually do.
Okay, anything else? I don't have anything at the moment.
Nope.
Oh, I guess the only thing I should let you guys know about is those of you who didn't read the article that was in Friday's paper about Manaway's utility sale on ballot. I sent an email today. I tried to call Diane Smith who wrote the article yesterday and didn't get a response. I sent an email today for clarification because there were so many inconsistencies. She didn't even bother to see if there had been any updates. She had used figures from back last December when we passed it. And so now she has all the clarification. I wrote something up and Mary Ann calculated the usage. And then we had Michelle check it and I shared it with John and Matt and sent it on to Diane. And she's going to fix it on the website and she will be watching this tape tomorrow and doing an updated article for the newspaper. Okay, moving on to bills of resolution and addendum bills of resolution.
Oh, we have to add one that I missed. And this will go on the addendum to the, it's for Botson Brothers. It's going to be paid out of cemetery and is for $2,530.
And you had approved in, I think it was back in, end of July or August, to do the mausoleum doors for a total of $37,000, so. I think it's $100. It's probably just right on. Anything else? Any other questions on the bills of resolution and addendum bills of resolution?
Motion to approve both of them.
Well, we have to first make a motion, Ben, to amend that $2,530 for Botson Brothers.
I'll make a motion to amend it.
Thank you.
Second.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion to approve both now?
They're moved.
Second.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to legislation. Ordinance 2020-30, since I wasn't at the last meeting and last month would have been the third reading, did you guys table this? So do we have to take it off the table? Tammy is shaking her head yes.
Not tabled it.
Yeah.
Would someone make a motion to take it off the table?
So moved.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Paula?
No.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
No.
Marty?
Yes.
Paula?
No.
So it's three to three? Is that what I'm coming up with?
Mm-hmm.
So, Michelle? Is this one of those tiebreaker things, or this just goes dead?
This is a tie. The mayor gets to break the tie.
Okay, I vote yes. Moving on to 2020-31, an ordinance amending Chapter 610 of the zoning ordinances of the Village of Manaway relating to site plan reviews. Motion to take this off the table?
So moved.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Paula?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to 2020-41, an ordinance appropriating funds for the Village of Manaway during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021. This would be second reading. Any discussion? I do have a question. Did you guys set up a workshop last month for this, or what was decided?
I don't think we did. Did we, Matt?
There was discussion, and it was, it was decided we didn't really need to because the dollar amounts hadn't made a change.
And we've been over it about 10 times already.
Okay, we'll wait and go third reading and then see what next month brings after the election. Resolution 2020-42, a resolution authorizing certain fund transfers by the clerk treasurer between the water and sewer operating funds and their respective debt services, service reserve funds necessary to meet the 2021 service requirements. This is second reading. Any discussion on this? Would someone entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
We, we have one more reading. We might as well wait and see how the election goes.
Okay. Sounds fine to me. Ordinance 2020-43, adoption of the 2021 calendar. This is second reading.
We do it every year.
I know. That's why it's the second reading. Nobody has any dates they want to change?
Nope.
Okay, moving on. Resolution 2020-45, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Portage County Commissioners relating to the proposed amendment of ordinance 2019-49, the Village of Manaway County of Portage Water and Sewer Systems Transfer Agreement, declaring emergency. This is third reading. Any discussion? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Who seconded?
I did, Jenny. Scott.
Who moved, then?
Matt.
I did.
Okay. All right, Ben?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Okay, passes? Ordinance 2020-46, an ordinance authorizing renewal of the agreement for the use of the, of a portion of the Gerald Booker Park Lodge by the American Legion Post 193. This is second reading. Any discussion? Moving on to ordinance 2020-47, an ordinance authorizing an advance from the General Fund 1,000 to the Booker Park Walking Trail Fund 4201, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading. I think what this is, is, is they were doing a, with the trail, and they're almost done with it, and Jenny needs to transfer funds that will get reimbursed, our, our portion for that. Is that correct, Jenny?
Yes, only it's in advance.
In advance, yes, so you get it back.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Would someone entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
It sounded like Marty.
It was.
Okay.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Ordinance 2020-48, an ordinance authorizing certain adjustments to the 2020 appropriations and declaring an emergency. This is Jenny had told us about, this is that the local coronavirus relief fund has to appropriate. Any discussion? Motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Marty?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2020-49, an ordinance amending Section 450.07 of zoning ordinances of the Village of Manaway relating to illumination of signs. This is first reading. Open for discussion?
We need to set up a public hearing for this December meeting. This one and 50 will need public hearings. So just.
What day, Michelle? December what?
Whenever, whenever our December meeting is, just in case there's not 30 days between the November meeting and the December meeting. I figured I'd bring it up now.
Okay, December meeting is going to be December 15th.
Yes. That needs to be in the paper more than 30 days in advance of the meeting.
Okay, did everybody read this and understand it?
Yes. My question is, um, I'm just trying to think off the top of my head in town. Is there any businesses that have internal, internally illuminated signs?
Yes, there's, yeah, there's, there's quite a few.
Yeah, I was thinking of Tally.
Yeah. Well, you know, UH, you know, UH is, and so we, we've been at this for quite a while, but it, it was, we've had a real hard time with, what do we do? You know, what do we do with the businesses that do have them? So, I mean, what we're, what we're trying to write into this legislation is that a sign can be repaired, but a sign cannot be changed and be internally lit. Like if a business sells, you know, like our gas station. I mean, we can't tell them they can't have it, you know, but if businesses change, the sign, a sign can be repaired without changing the sign and still be internally lit. So we're never going to get away with, like, getting rid of all of them, but we're trying to stop the new businesses with signs like that. We're trying to get everybody to look like, you know, the coffee shop. I mean, basically, you know, hometown sign with a beautiful lit, you know, it's lit on top or lit underneath, but trying to get away from the very commercial internally lit signs, so.
If somebody with an internal lit one fails, they cannot replace, they, they cannot replace it with the light same as they have. They'd have to put new current, not illuminated.
Right, right.
Like if Jody fell down, hit the road, and smashed.
Yeah.
Not replace it as it is right now. She'd have to put to the current, if that happens after.
Right, right. A sign can be repaired.
Repaired, not replaced.
Not replace. So, I, I mean, an internally illuminated sign, so. They can repair their signs, but they can't replace their signs.
Yeah, well, it's almost like a grandfather clause type thing.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, you can't force everybody to change signs.
No, no.
Also, too, I think, yeah, I think there's kind of like, kind of like, uh, you know, gray area between, you know, like a sign like university, you know, hospitals. Like, that's a nice quality sign.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's, it's in sort of levels of quality sign versus like, and I hate to use this example, but like a, a convenience store on Ridge Road and Parma. But yeah, kind of, yeah, like a cheaper type of.
Right, right.
But yeah, so there's a difference there, you know, but, yeah. Yeah, I agree.
We're trying to slow it, you know, kind of slow the roll, you know, like, they, they can keep them, they have them, we can't do anything about that, but we're just trying to stop any new ones, so. Okay?
Makes sense, cool.
And, Michelle, do we need a motion to, for the public hearing for December 15th, or?
No, just, just have it set.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance 2020-15, ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 480 of the zoning ordinances of the Village of Manaway relating to exterior maintenance, property maintenance. First reading. Any discussion?
It sounds like, um, changing it so you're addressing issues, um, problem areas on, areas that are on the village roads or the state highways. That sounds appropriate. It would be difficult to, to go deeper into somebody's property and say, oh, you've got it, you've got a hole you got to fix.
Right.
Yeah, so that sounds appropriate. One of the questions under Section 2, you've got the ground service, surface hazards. You've got holes, cracks, excavations. What, what do you mean by breaks? When I read this, it sort of sounded like what's being hit here predominantly is going to be sidewalks, like a break in a sidewalk, or, you know, the sidewalk is pushed up in places, and so it's protruding in some places. Is that what we mean by breaks? Is there another reference to that?
I think it's just covering anything anybody would call it.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, that's not a crack. Yes, I mean, okay, what do you want to call it? It's there.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this tonight? Moving on to ordinance 2020-51, an ordinance amending Sections 159.05 and 159.09 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Manaway relating to quorum minutes and activity reports of the Landmark Commission.
And, and this one, I realize you're, you've, in the meetings section, 159.05, meetings, and you've struck the, the sentence, "Quorum shall be simply a majority of the commission voting members." And you're replacing that by saying it has to be four members. And I know that in the past, there has been some push to say, hey, we're not getting the volunteers to be on landmarks. And there should be, so Planning had decided a number of years ago, they wanted to stick with the seven-member rule and not go back, and as, I think at that point, it was Landmarks had proposed going back to five members because the village wasn't coming up with the necessary, um, members. And, you know, if we're going to put this in writing, that it has to be four voting members, and I think we've got to work to get that committee up to seven members. Because right now, it's at five, and, you know, it's kind of, they had asked for it to be reduced at one point. They've decided not to.
Well, the issue here persists for five members. It should just be just a quorum. What's a quorum of five?
No, it's, Ben, it's a committee of seven, that currently we only have five.
I understand that, and I, I will understand. I got it here as I can hear. But what I'm saying is, if you had only five members, what is the quorum for five members? That's what I'm saying.
Well, if I can help clarify, Ben.
As long as there's a quorum, I don't say what is a problem.
That's the issue that did come up at, at the last Landmarks Commission meeting, was whether a quorum of a seven-member committee with only five members was four or three. That's exactly what the issue was. So I did some research, and there's actually a pretty, pretty big split, actually, in opinion. That's why I wanted to bring it up at Planning Commission, to see what Planning Commission wanted to recommend. I mean, yes, there's opinion that goes both ways, so.
If you got a quorum, you got a quorum.
And it depends on how you define a quorum. That, that's what this issue is, so.
I kind of, I kind of.
If you've got the five members, then whatever the quorum for five members is, that should be what it is. It's, it's hard to get anybody to get on any committee in this village for anything, anyway. So if you got five members on that thing, whatever a quorum for five members is, should be, should suffice. But that's just my opinion.
That's also my opinion.
I agree, Ben.
Does this have to go back to Planning, Michelle, or can council amend this?
Uh, council can certainly amend this if they want to, however they want to amend it. I mean, we've got, we've got three readings available. It's, um, it's up to you how, how you all want to do it. I just would caution you, what would happen if two more people would resign? Then you suddenly have a commission of three members.
Well, it's a quorum of two members.
Then it takes two.
Whatever the quorum is, that's, I, that's, it's up to you guys.
That's why we decided if there were supposed to be seven members, if there were only five on it, we were, instead of, we were trying to make it easy and just say, four people had to be there to vote. That's. That's, that was our rationale is.
I disagree with all that. If there's only five members on the committee and you don't have seven. Then whatever the quorum of five is, that should be surprise. I, I, you know, you can, you can do it any way y'all want to. I just don't, I don't see there's a problem in this thing.
Okay, it's still just first reading.
Okay, then I would like, like to propose that under the one fifty nine oh five meeting section. We scratched the proposed statement from planning that is written in italic, italicized. And go with what is currently in our, um. Ordinance. A quorum shall be a simple majority of the commission voting members. If we have five, then the quorum is out of the five. If we have a full staff on that, that committee of seven. Then it would be a quorum of seven. But I think unless we can, yes, so I make that motion.
I suck at it.
Matt?
No.
Ben?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Tammy?
No.
Scott?
No.
This is another tie that the mayor's going to have to break.
No. Okay, this is first reading. Oh, that was the last one. Yay.
Just real, real quick on that one. I don't like the idea of there only potentially being a three member committee and having some people vote on something.
No.
Well, I think it has to be the same across the board. Every committee has to be the same. If there's five people are supposed to be on it. So it's always the same.
Right, I agree with, with Ben and Adam just by saying that it's hard to get people to fill that, but, but I think three.
It's hard. It's almost impossible.
And I think we, then council needs to, whether it's planning, whether it's the mayor, whether it's somebody, administration has to be working. Not just putting a statement out there that we need. Members for these committees, but we need to actively. Recruit. For the committee. There is, and leaving it sit there with a requirement of having seven. And not allowing it to go back to five, which you can fill. Is not appropriate. So something needs to be considered on that. Okay.
Okay, that was the end of legislation. Moving on to chief, so your report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Council and everybody. Um, couple of things. We did have a safety meeting, uh, this month on October seventh. Uh, under, we went over the appropriation status to vendors and the SRO report. Everything was on file. Uh, under old business, we discussed all gathering these events are still on hold pending the outcome of the virus. Um, we're looking to purchase our own sanitizing machines. That's been completed. School opening, we were waiting on ODE. The schools are open. Uh, they're closely monitoring that since Portage County isn't the red. Fortunately that they're going by zip codes now, so the superintendent's working with the board of health. And they're going as far as which zip code has the highest numbers. Uh, fortunately, uh, we're still pretty low in our area as far as cases go. So the school's going to stay open and they'll be monitoring that. Under new business, uh, went over a couple of things. I, some things came up and we're going to need some motions to approve. Uh, I know that we had discussed the cares funds. That, you know, will see fit on spending a hundred, but some of these are, uh, large amounts over three thousand. So for housekeeping. The motions that, uh, safety wanted to come forward to council. The first one's going to be I need a motion, um, for purchasing five laptops for Zoom meetings using the care funds. Uh, that amount is going to be six thousand ninety dollars and fifteen cents was the quote that was given me if I can get a motion and a second and vote.
They're moved.
Second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The second one is, um, installing the four temperature gates for the park lodge using the care fund. Uh, if you've noticed, um, they actually had them installed and they were coming down to our area. They did put them in last week. Uh, they are temperature gates that you walk through, displays your temperature. Uh, the threshold right now is set to one hundred point four. It also double serves as a metal detector. So when, if, when we can ever open back up, it's actually a dual purpose thing for the safety of us. Uh, if I can get a motion, that, uh, total is going to be thirteen thousand nine ninety nine and ninety six cents, almost fourteen thousand for those four units.
Or some of.
Let's add in our, our, um. Addendum bills.
Yep.
Thirteen thousand nine hundred, and that was line five. Have we already passed this? Approved it?
We've already been invoiced for it, so I put it on the list.
And nobody raised a question, I, but I can second his motion. I don't.
I wasn't planning, I wasn't planning on him showing up that quick with them. We thought that we were going to put on the list. And when he kind of called and says, hey, by the way, I'm coming out tomorrow. I have these four units set aside.
And today's the deadline for the first medal of paperwork.
All right, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, the third one is for installing UV LED lights into our HVAC systems in village hall and park lodge. What that is, is it's going to kill mold, spores, clean the air. A lot of home systems are doing pride heating and cooling is going to be doing that work. That one's going to be for three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. If I can get a motion, second and vote.
I'm sure. Second.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Okay, and the last one, and this just kind of came up in the last couple of days. It's going to be the TAC and it's going to be for two model Panasonic CF three one tough books. What they are is our MDTs. Lot of controversy whether purchasing of our mobile data terminals is included. I know the champion township bought, um, five new ones. There's one police department that bought one for every one of their officers, um, to help spread. Basically, the more we have, the less that people are going to be sharing. So. With two of these, that will allow us to have one in each car, one in dispatch and, um. Or one in patrol room. And then if somebody, unfortunately, if they were to get COVID, if they have to work from home or if we could do stuff offsite. It'll be that. And those two units are going to be eight thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. That's a little high. Um, I'm still waiting on the final quote. It's going to be a little bit less than that, but if I can get a motion and a second and a vote.
They're moved.
Second.
Matt?
Damn, yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, two other items, uh, trick or treat. We had looked at possibly moving from five to seven. At this time, we're still going to stick with six to eight. That's what everybody around us is doing and we figure if we altered it. We might get double dippers and what we're trying to do is if we run consistently, hopefully everybody. More or less will stay in their own sandbox and hopefully, um, well, you know, for our residents and try to eliminate at least some of. Parting. I know a lot of the businesses are trying to figure out how to social distance. Uh, this is changing and evolving every day. Some places are putting plastic tubes at the top of their stairs. I know Hilltop Christian's doing that. And then they'll kind of shoot the candy down to shoot into the bag. I think the kids are probably getting that. Some places are going to trunk retreats. I know, uh, Manaway Corners Bar and Grill has invited us to come up. Some of our residents, they've got something coming up. So a lot of people are trying to do a lot of stuff, but at this time, we are still planning on doing trick or treat. From six PM to eight PM and it'll be Saturday the thirty first in the village. And. Yeah, depending on what the stipulations are from the higher ups in the state and the health department. You know, we may have to modify that. If that happens, there will be an AMG alert that goes out notifying the residents as well as our Facebook page. That's the best communication I can do, um, in that short amount of time. And the last thing that came up, um, there was a concern about fifteen minute parking on Main Street. Um, with businesses expanding on the east side of the road, there was a question whether we could put some fifteen minute parking signs on that side of the road. Um, I went down through, I kind of been looking and watching. Uh, I know that in the past when Halitz was there and they closed. The fifteen minute signs kind of got a little bit destroyed and we just never put them back up. There was no need. Now that we're booming, those two signs were reconstructed and, and put back up. And the businesses on the east side of the street felt that they were put up only for the coffee shop. Well, in fact, that's not true. They were put up everybody. So I was asked about putting fifteen minute signs up east side of the road. And in looking at it, um, I don't think it's the right thing to do to put a fifteen minute sign up.
Not.
Business that opened. However, in looking at it, what we may want to revisit, and I'll bring this to safety and, you know, it's work in progress. But I think with the, with the flower shop opening, the sub shops opening, we're going to have the new meat shop with the bakery opening. Uh, you know, things are starting to open up on the east side of the road and that's, if anybody drives, that's where I sit on the weekends. We get a lot of cross walking. If we could maybe possibly look at down the road, put in one of those fifteen minute signs, maybe by the green space. Something to provide the east side of the road a little bit. You know, share it out a little bit, but again, it's something just to work at. Uh, I was approached by one of the business owners. I, I had a conversation and I told him, you know, we'll be, we'll have further conversation down the road about it. Bottom line is, we know, yes, we want the businesses downtown. We want them to, uh, boom and we want business to succeed. And parking is just always an issue. Uh, we have started watching for some of the tenants who live in the apartments on Main Street above the businesses. That they are properly parking in the back where they should be and not tying up the spots out front. So we're starting to watch that and make sure that they realize that there is a two hour limit between eight AM and seven PM. And they can't just park out front all day. So just something, uh, that we're kind of working on there. Uh, the, the items recommended to council, you've already taken care of. There was nothing as far as finance, park service. We didn't table anything. We had no executive session. Uh, our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for November fourth at six PM. We had a motion, a second, and we adjourned at six twenty seven. If you have any questions, that's all that I have, Mayor.
Are we going to put something on your Facebook page or the record carrier, uh, regarding trick or treat? Uh, with the hours and also reminding them that people that wish to participate would have their outdoor light on and those that do not wish to would. Please leave their lights off.
Yeah, I can add that. I did put down on our Facebook page already about the six to eight. If closer is provided it's a go, I'll just put, you know, that we still are a go, practice social distancing. Uh, you know, if you don't want visitors there, leave your light off. If you're participating, then leave your light on. Some people don't want, uh, visitors up near their porch. I suggest that they go down. You know, uh, sidewalk by the curb side there and, you know. I'll try to put a list together what other people are doing and any recommendations that come down. I know Michelle shared a, uh, a nice article and it's basically everything we've been trying to do all along through this whole pandemic. You know, we try to maintain and do what we do and there's some recommendations in there about what type of mask to wear and what not to wear. But yeah, as it gets closer, I will add more stuff and, uh, get that out on our page.
Thank you.
Okay.
Village administrator, John True, please.
Trying to get off mute there. Yes, as far as the COVID, we got CJ Electric still waiting to get the, the final quote from them. And also Harner Plumbing. And Harner Plumbing could be a little bit extensive being that's our pipe coming in is too slow for self flush toilets. But we'll take a look at that and see what kind of cost they provide us to upsize or find some toilets that actually are flushless. So we're still examining that with, uh, Harner and CJ Electric, but those will be coming up. We'll have a price next couple of weeks here. I'll just forward it to every council member and then we'll move it to the next council meeting. Uh, cleanup day is coming up. I know for, uh, DMRC and the schools, uh, we're going to need, uh. To get the waiver signed for those if they're going to be working on the right of way. Right now, we don't have any projects as far as that for them. Uh, our guys have been on Canada Road and a couple of other issues, uh, so we don't have anything for cleanup day. Uh, with the COVID and everything else, but at first, the first communication about there were going to be a lot more people than they are. Let's, let's hope they have social distance and, uh, we'll, uh, make sure we get the waivers out there if they're working on the right of ways at all. That's all I have right now.
John, what do you have about water meters?
Thank you very much. I did it, no doubt. Water meters right now are suspended because we're in the red. Uh, they worked on about three or four days and then they suspended operations. We were in contact. They are coming in to train our men. On how to read the devices. They'll take just our men around and you, using that clip device so we can pick up the readings. So as long as on a red, they've suspended for right now till we get out of the red and then they'll be back on putting water meters in again. Thank you very much.
They, they put mine in.
Yes, they got about twenty, I think maybe twenty or thirty meters in all day. They were, they were doing quite well.
They got, that guy put mine in in less than thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Um, Mary Ann said they've installed almost a hundred.
Oh, wow.
So that's, that's great that they did that already. Yes.
Yeah, I know they, that was, Lauren said they did ours in like ten minutes.
Yeah.
In and out.
Bang, bang, gone.
Yeah.
I told a God, I asked for a raise.
I was scheduled for today. That's why I knew they were suspended.
My guy five minutes to refuse to do it.
And then we've had some that they've been there two and a half hours, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I guess so. And I'll meet you next week for an update also.
Okay.
If I can interrupt real quick for them, I don't know what John and I are talking about the, um, plumbing. We're looking at touchless, uh, facilities in the restrooms, um, toilets and sinks. And then as far as the electric. We're looking at putting in motion sensor light switches. So we don't have to, light switches are one of the high traffic or, uh, transmission area for stuff. So just so everybody knows, that's what we're looking to do and after a certain time, the lights will shut off. So that should help save on our electric. It's all paper. Um, it's paid for out of the care Zach, so we're actually looking to be more efficient within the building. I'm sorry.
They ought to put one on the light in the elevator.
I don't know that we can do that.
I don't.
I think that has to stay on, but Marty, I like your thinking.
Hey, Joe, I, I know this sounds crazy, but if you still have, you know, a few funds to, uh, use. We made, at, when all this started, our boss designed this little, um, steel, stainless steel plate. That we screwed on the bottom of all of our doors so you could open the doors with your foot. We, in fact, we had a company up in Willoughby make them for us. And just recently I was in, I can't even remember where I was, what. What store I was in or restaurant or something, but they had them. And I looked down at it and I was cracking up because we told our boss that he should patent that idea, you know, it was touch free. They're called a foot pool. I mean, there's a company making them now. And they're awesome. You just screw them right to the bottom of your door and you can open, just open the door with your foot. So everything's touch free, you know, so, I mean, just something to think about. You know, running around your office or down at the service garage, maybe, you know, where all the doors are, you know, swinging. You know, swinging doors, but.
Right. Okay, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Yeah, they're the foot pool. That's I I I don't know if that was the company that made them or if that was. That was stamped on the one that I saw out in public, so.
Google become my new best friend. I'll do some looking.
Yeah, okay.
I do have a question also. I know that I brought it up at service like they're planning. I can't remember where. And the chief and I have talked about it is should we invest in a flat screen T V out in council chambers? Um, I I realize that everything is supposed to open up in December. Um, but if it doesn't, uh, whenever we do hold our Zoom meetings there. And Michelle has to has been gracious enough and refuses to be compensated for it. Uh, Have equipment there. So she's not lugging stuff in and out. You know, get the flat screen T V. We're going to have, uh, one of the, um, extra laptops for. Uh, the COVID and just have everything there. So she just has to come in and. Log on. I mean, it's just and when the COVID does pass, being optimistic. I mean, there's times whenever we have, um. The engineer or all of us want to bring something up on the screen to share. You know, make it, I don't know, bigger than a thirty six, what a fifty four or whatever size those are and have it up on the wall. So you could see. What we're viewing. I just a thought for you guys to think about.
Apparently. I think that's a great idea.
I think it's a good idea, but I I also think there's where are we going to hang it? I know I've thought about it several times too. Do we hang it behind us? Or that way, if things are shown, we can't see it, you know? From the layout of the council.
Over by the elevator, maybe.
By the elevator. Yeah, that'll restrict the size of it, but that that's been kind of where I thought maybe.
Well, maybe that where the council, uh, Jenny puts the council paperwork, it could be there and it could be one of those ones that pulls out and shifts. Don't they make them like that?
Yeah, they do mix double mounts.
Yeah.
Mayor Walt.
About this. Rich from bringing in a screen whenever he wants to do a presentation, you know, I mean, we could just do that.
And one thing, Mayor, or Jenny, Jenny probably can answer this question. I know we had to have most of our stuff paperwork done for today. Jenny, is that for purchases that were made through September thirtieth? And we're able to make purchases till the end of the year?
Yes. And then any, any purchases from October first through December thirty first, I'll file on January sixth.
Okay. So we can still spend money?
Yes.
Okay.
The current rule that was just amended is now that, uh, funds have to be encumbered by November twentieth. So that's a new, it was October fifteenth, but the legislature just amended it. Give us a little bit of an extension.
Okay, so as long. As long as we have the funds appropriated to do the paperwork. By November twentieth.
Right.
Okay.
The funds are all appropriated.
Or an invoice, whatever.
Yeah.
So as long as we have, we get quotes and we do purchase rec by November twentieth, we'll be okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
He for John, then it sounds like. Everybody would be in favor of this. So we, what would we need? We need the T V. We would probably need a microphone or whatever. That's. So maybe check into that.
But it's right through service and get it all tied together like it ought to be quickly.
Right, okay. Thank you. Okay, anything else before I move on to Rich? Okay, Rich I Felice.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'll I'll try to be brief. Chief Urso was extraordinarily talkative tonight, so. Hi, Chief. You have my, uh, written report. Um, the really, the only thing to bring to your attention, uh, there hasn't been any decision. On O D N R Phase Three at Bucard Park, uh, no decision, O P W. C. Round thirty five. Uh, I'm fairly pleased, uh, from what we seen that is substantially complete for the trail. At Bucard Park as well as the work at Orchard Street. Uh, we actually had a video of the truck movements through there and it's working as expected. Uh, through there and the workmanship seems to be. Acceptable. Um, we think we have, I think we have just seeding to complete our final restoration. Uh, the work on Orchard Street, uh, the contractor wants to submit just one and final invoice, which is being processed. For for that work. So, um. Uh, other than that, the only other thing to mention to council this evening is. Um, uh, the Prospect Street, which we have the funds for for Phase Two. Um, I anticipate, uh, advertise bidding, review bids, so forth, so that shooting for. A, uh, December council meeting award. Uh, this will allow us, I we think to. Uh, to get contractors interested in next year, because we're going to say construction won't start till spring twenty twenty one. For Prospect Street. And hopefully this will line up, we'll get some, uh, competitive bids for for that project. And so the goal is to, uh, December, I think, or December fifteenth is our council meeting in December to make a word for that. Um, that's all I have to report, uh, Mayor Council, unless there are any questions.
I just have a quick question about the Matt's Road Bridge project. Cause I'm just, I'm just kind of playing catch up with a lot of the stuff right now, you know what I mean? So Matt's Road, what's, what's the whole scope of that project? Is that to replace that bridge and like make that a full access road all the way through there?
That's, that's correct, Matt. In in addition, there is a segment of the the roadway. Be on on the, uh, east side. That would have to be completed, uh, from what is there of Matt's Road up to the bridge approach and then the bridge. So, um, uh, there's, there's been an exhaustive, uh, review of the various alternatives to help finance the project. Um, our, uh, our recommendations were in the, um, oh, I I did summarize that to the State Infrastructure Bank. The State Infrastructure Bank is from, from, uh, our Jennifer Brown, who's our grants, uh, uh, writing writer specialist. Um, it seems to be the only, uh, avenue combined with O P W. C. Leveraging, uh, low interest loan from the State Infrastructure Bank. Uh, along with state O P W. C. Uh, is a way to to finance what I believe our last estimate was about a million dollar project.
The bridge, not the road.
The the bridge, and I think I had the extension of the road. In there, but I I can't recall, but it's, it's definitely in the seven figures. Yeah.
Good.
Uh, the carrot, the carrot to the funding is that. We, we actually had, uh, plans done for, uh, what was, if I recall. A, a double span. And the village in concern with the navigation for, uh, recreational trap canoeists and such. We're looking to get a single span. Uh, bridge design. That's, that's what the cost, that's why the costs were escalated to a single span. Uh, we developed that estimate for a single span so that it was complete clearance underneath with any, without any obstruction. Which I think was obviously a benefit to recreation, uh, which we're trying to obviously encourage in the village.
Yep, sure. Yeah, very good, very good.
Sure.
Okay, moving on. Uh, Scott for service and planning.
Okay, um, service. Did we do? Oh, Soapak's Derby wants to paint the building down at the park. And, uh, well, they don't want to paint the building. The some high school students want to paint the building. So we agreed that if they could. Come up with a paint scheme, give the, uh, give John and the mayor some paint colors that we would agree. They need to sign some. Sign some waivers before they do the work. So that would be fun if they can do it in their school colors. We discussed Canada Road at length. I think, um. What we're going to try and do with Canada Road about the paving and clearing the ditches. So hopefully we can get that underway. Um, we discussed the COVID nineteen funds, which Joe and John have already gone over. We went over the Ohio Edison Pole Banner Agreement, which we've done nothing with yet, but. We were thinking that now that we have a couple of new part time employees, maybe we could. Have them go around and count some. Some flags and lights and whatever we have to do to suffice for the. For Ohio Edison, or maybe we do nothing until they call us on it. Um, we went over West Prospect Street a little bit. Um, Potato Festival Contract, we talked about. It's due in March, so we're going to have to, council is going to have to start thinking about that. We're going to bring it up. Um, the Kimball Recycling, we're going to have to talk about by the end of the year or two. That's going to be up or sometime in twenty twenty one, we're gonna. We need to just start looking into quite a few things with council does. Um, and then Paula brought up about the Christmas decorations at down at the mini park, how we're going to take care of that. So. We really need to come up with a game plan for that and probably some decorations also. And that was about it. I think John pretty much covered the rest of it. Um, planning.
Randy, can I, can I, Scott, can I?
Yep, yep, go ahead, go ahead.
On the soapbox building.
Yes.
I did contact him. He came out and pressure washed it on Friday. He was going to get back with me with a color of paint. He called me Monday. He had people, they've got most of it painted already. Uh, We're waiting for the vouchers to be returned on that one. Let's see, what was the other thing? A Canada Road.
Yes.
John. Are the guys complete with with doing sixteen hundred feet of ditching or what needs to be ditched within the sixteen hundred feet?
I drove it the other night. It's really close to being done. I'll check with Dave this week to make sure, but.
Should we go ahead and get council's approval? Uh, I did speak with Jenny and Jenny, please chime in, uh, at the. September meeting, she said we had forty thousand dollars that we could do sixteen hundred feet this year. She did not think that we would have forty thousand to do another sixteen hundred feet next year. Uh, after she did some more looking because of the, uh, matching funds on West Prospect and such. Uh, The email that she sent me, she thinks we're, she is comfortable with forty thousand for this year and forty thousand for next year.
Yes.
If we can, uh, get council's approval, if weather holds out to, uh, contact Todd Lamb as soon as, um. Dave is done or pretty close to being done to get the first sixteen hundred feet done on Canada Road.
Do we, do we have a? Starting point here that's not going to interfere with the county or can we coordinate all this through with the county with that culvert?
John is going to bring his people out and have them paint across the road where the approach to the. Uh, Culvert Bridge area would be done. Isn't that correct, John?
Correct, Mayor. We'll make sure that's done in the first couple of dry days. Here we have.
Okay, so there'll be no conflict. I mean, if we get, if we can get started before the county gets started, there's no. No problems, right?
We'll make sure it's the seamless transition.
Okay. Then I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Marty?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Hey, what was your third thing, Scott?
Uh. What was it? Canada Road?
The Ohio Edison.
Oh, Ohio Edison, yeah.
Uh, Matt is is going to be handling, uh. Discussing, he checked on the insurance. He's going to be contacting, uh. Our lady Lisa Bell or whatever her name is from there. Michelle has concerns about the wording in the contract because the contract says we have to renew it every year. Uh, in different areas. So Matt is working on handling that with, uh, Ohio Edison at this point.
Yes, yes, yeah, real and real quick too. Uh, we did contact the insurance company. And it turns out that we are covered on that end. And it did issue us a certificate of insurance, but Michelle had concerns. If the agreement that they want us to sign contains an indemnification clause. So I'm going to be working with. Uh, the people at Ohio Edison about that. I'm probably going to call probably tomorrow with those or something. Like keep everybody updated.
Right on. All right. Okay, so then planning, um. Well, you've seen a lot of it tonight. We were working on signs. We've been working on the exterior maintenance code. We had a, uh. We had a property owner come to the meeting and discuss, um. Wanting to remove one of their buildings. And so we're going to, we're in a little. This is going to take some time, but we're in a little fact finding mission with, uh. We're going to look into this FEMA. This, this property owner had come to us and said that he had, he was told to contact FEMA about, uh, removing this building. And. Correct me if I'm wrong, Linda, but. It some somehow. The village would end up with the property, which Tammy and I thought was a great idea. And I mean, I think the rest of planning did too.
Right, it's property acquisition for open spaces.
Yeah.
There's funding out there. I'm not sure what the match is on it.
Right.
Because it's riverfront too. I mean.
Right, right. It's a, yeah, it's a riverfront piece of property, which, which I don't know what we would do with it, but we would find something to do with it if it didn't cost us a penny. But.
Well, that was, that was the thing that the property owner wasn't real specific on whether he was going to pay the match or we would. I think it would be if it was a two hundred thousand dollar mitigation project. FEMA would pay seventy five percent, which would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars remaining. Twenty five percent, which would be fifty thousand dollars would be. Someone's responsibility.
Right. So regardless, that's a long, long ways away, but it's.
Well, he called me today and wanted to know if we had any words.
It. I'm sure this is going to grind slowly, so it's something we're going to, something we'll be working on and we'll try to keep you all in the loop.
Where's the property located at?
It's the old Middlefield Bank.
Okay, yep, all right, gotcha.
The building needs help and.
It does. I just noticed it today because somebody brought it to my attention.
Yeah.
And I drove past today and said, whoa, I guess, uh, yeah, it needs a little bit of work there. Yeah.
It's sink, and it's sinking. This is what's making it worse. So, yeah.
Yeah, 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 I'm hip.
And then we, we had a, uh, we had somebody else. Another resident Zoom, while he was not a resident yet, come in on Zoom. Um. He's thinking about purchasing the Claude Hopkins property, which I'm sure everybody's aware of, and he just had some zoning requirements. It had a bunch of questions for some zoning requirements. So. That was, uh, have you heard back from him, Linda?
Yes, he called, he emailed me the next morning. He is going to go through with his offer.
Great.
Soon as that is final, then he is going to be applying for, uh, variance on the agricultural issues that he wants to address. So.
Fantastic, so.
We got a lot of stuff going on in.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. That's fantastic.
And site plans.
And then we, uh, well, we discussed landmark commission at length. We discussed. Like we discussed, uh. The exterior maintenance code at length, and I think you guys know all of that. So that was about it. For planning.
Okay, Marty Parks and Shade Tree.
Parks and Shade Tree had the. We, we had a get together. We didn't actually. Discuss any particular thing. And, uh. We will have our next meeting tomorrow. And we have a whole list of things from D M. R. C. To go over and talk about. And then Edie wants to come to the, uh, November meeting. So. It will be a busy night. That's all I have now.
Okay. Okay. The doors are up. We still have to have the trim painted. I did reach out to Tom Nipper today because there will be a funeral scene film for the movie. And they're going to want, so hopefully our residents will understand. They want as many of the leaves that have fallen off the trees on the ground. They don't want us, you know how he goes through and, and chips them, that's not chip them, but.
Mose them.
Mose them up.
Alches them.
Alches them, thank you. And, and they would like as many leaves on the ground as possible that day. And I think the date is the week of November 8th. I think it's Monday or Tuesday, but I'm not certain. So like I say, he's going to send me his itinerary of where the different shots are going to be, but. Let's see, border zoning appeals, we have one case that's holding. We're still waiting for something from the vet clinic. See, there was another one. There were three. The new business across from Compass, the vet clinic. Somebody bought some of the Sontag property. They were going to need a, a site plan review because it's partially in the flood plain and, and that kind of stuff. And then Mr. Thorne, who would need a variance for the agricultural. So everybody's kind of just, and let's see, we had a new resident move into town. Pollings up in Pam and Bill, or Patsy and Bill Gasthouse.
Oh, good.
Moved in over the weekend, so. So we got new people coming into town. They want to get out of the city.
Hey, Linda, do we need to do anything down at the cemetery before the 8th? I mean, to help them out at all or everything's good?
That's why I say when I met with him yesterday, he said, he said, no, they have a certain business that they're going to be, it's going to be like their home headquarters and they're going to do all the COVID stuff, take temperatures every day and have forms that everybody has to fill out. There'll be, I guess Teresa from Italianos is going to be supplying them their lunch. Restoration 44 is going to be supplying their breakfast. And they'll be filming, you know, they have certain days. They're going to be filming at the pharmacy one day, filming at the UH Hospital Building. They're going to be filming on Prospect Street in front of the barber shop. That's the day that they're going to need some extras. They're going to be filming down by the river, by the walking bridge in that area there. Up on Prospect Street, here at Village Hall. They're going to be filming from inside Restoration 44. That's going to be set up like a diner, but you're going to be able to see out on the street. So they'll probably want people walking on the street during that time. So it sounds pretty exciting.
Good, good, good.
They're even going to have, the American Legion is going to be performing for, you know, taps and stuff for veterans. Because he's going to be a veteran, so it's going to be cool.
Good.
Okay, Ben, finance?
Jenny went over to finance and what we did other than that, we went through the legislation, which we just got through doing. So there's no sense in going back over that. And that's what we're doing, finance, that was the finance thing.
Okay, Paula?
As far as the Portage County Regional Planning, they're reviewing plaques for the township areas around us that really don't impact us. And so there's really nothing to report there. And safety, Chief, I think, covered it all, plus, plus some.
Plus some. And on and on and on. Anything else?
I've got one thing, really quick, actually probably a couple of things. Number one, with our, our meeting with Congressman Joyce, one thing I wanted to come out of that was just some, some guidance and direction on economic development, because you touched on it earlier. I, I believe as you, that people are looking to move out of the city and, and that small town America is about to enter a, a renaissance period because of that. So, so I want to, a lot of my focus moving forward is going to be on economic development, things like that. And, and one thing that came out of the meeting with Congressman Joyce is a contact at the Portage County Economic Development, you know, office or whatever, was the meeting with Mr. Brad Earhart. And I got to meet him this morning. And, and if you guys don't know who Brad Earhart is, he's the, the Portage County Economic Development guy. But basically his job is to make sure that businesses have what they need in order to be successful. And we went through, we had a meeting and I told him who I was and, you know, I'm getting started with all this stuff and gave me a lot of just like, you know, 101 level information and kind of just some places to get started. So I just want to let everybody know that this is going to be a lot of my focus moving forward. And if anybody wants, you know, in on that or wants to assist or anything, please reach out and, you know, we'll work together on that. But I've, I've got some ideas and some people that I want to work with and stuff like this. So I just wanted to say kind of that's where mine, mine's at moving forward a little bit right now. And if nobody has any questions or comments on that, I just had a question about the park. What is Katie's, Katie's Meadow?
Katie's Meadow is on the east side, east side of the park where the community turned around is with the potato festival. It was named after one of our council people. And they, Chris Wood J.C.'s put the pavilion up. They just called it Katie's Meadows and that's where it came from.
Okay, cool. That's all I had, everybody.
Okay. The only thing, real quick, we were talking about the landmark commission. I have reached out to the Landmark Commission because I spoke with Nathan Bevel from the state level. And we have failed to turn in the last two years' worth of annual reports. And when I spoke with the, the Landmark Commission, the chair was not aware of the reports having to be done. So I sent him over the forms so he can get those done, so. So hopefully it won't affect our status or anything. I just, I know that I reminded Nick after Renee left because Renee used to be the one who did it. And I, it's, you know, I didn't watch it closely enough, so. But hopefully we can get all back on status. And I mean, he did not say we were threatened or anything, you know, but he just said, you know, get them done. So they have those now. And that's all I've got. Anything else? Paula, Ben, Marty? Motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Scott? Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
You guys have a good evening. Take care of yourself and be safe.